This board meeting of the Board of Education for February 4th, 2020, I thought that might get your attention, is called to order. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on this evening has been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being televised live on Channel 28 and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the district website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. Welcome. Good evening. After at tonight's meeting, the board will hear from MESD Superintendent Sam Brier. Welcome Superintendent Brier. On the services they provide in support of our students as well as celebrate the birthday of Rosa Parks. And then we will move into a work session upstairs on enrollment balancing. At this time, I would also just like to acknowledge that this, we, at our last meeting, we recognized Black History Month and that this is a week of action for Black Lives Matter. So we have all sorts of activities going on in all of our schools this week, including Hoodies Up, where they'll be honoring Trayvon Martin's life tomorrow at Roosevelt and honoring all of our young people whose lives are lost to gun violence. And there've been a lot of conversations in all of our classrooms this week. I'd like to just take the personal privilege of relaying a conversation that I had with one of our students this morning, who apologized to me when I went to shake his hand, that he couldn't lift his arm. He had been shot a few weeks ago as a bystander in his neighborhood. Later in our conversation, it came out that as a kid, he had been caught in gang crossfire and had been shot then. He's one of our students. He's a senior, a beautiful, brilliant, capable, hopeful student, who has been shot twice in his young life. This is our community. These are our kids. Thank you for the Hoodies Up Day of Action and all of the other Black Lives Matter activities that are taking place across our district. We honor all of you. Thank you. This time, the board will vote on the business agenda. Board members, are there any items you would like to pull for discussion? We will set aside, we'll set these aside for discussion and vote at the end of the meeting. Our business agenda has been revised to rescind 6046, which is the complaint that we just considered and voted on in executive session upstairs. Any items to be removed for discussion? Ms. Bradshaw, are there any changes to the business agenda?
I have one I want to make a comment on, but it's just a comment. So we can get it.
You want to vote first and then?
We can do it with the move in a second and then just.
Okay. Do I have a motion in a second to adopt the business agenda?
So moved.
Director Bailey moves and Director DePass seconds the adoption of the business agenda. Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment on the business agenda?
No.
Is there any board discussion on the business agenda?
Yes. I, I just want to note for the record that, sorry, that one of the contracts on resolution number 6044, and I want to note for the formal minutes, that informal minutes, that the board did receive a staff memo on the efficacy and the cost effectiveness of the current model, of which our leadership management at the Office of the General Counsel occurs. Legal costs were part of the Secretary of State's audits, that they ask us to provide a greater level of oversight. And I just want to note that we have a memo, the speaking to that specific contract. And as the other legal contracts are coming through, a similar level of scrutiny is happening by staff and board members.
Thank you. The board will now vote on resolutions 6044 through 6048 exempting 6046. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes. Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? The business agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero with student representative lateral voting.
Yes.
All right. Before we begin the public comment period, I would like to review our guidelines for public comment. The board thanks the community for taking the time to attend this meeting and provide your comments to us. We value public input as it informs our work, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our responsibility as a board is to actively listen without distraction from electronic devices. One quick reminder, any oversized signs need to be in the back foyer, and signs in the audience should not be held in any way that obstruct others viewing of the meeting. Board members and the superintendent will not respond to comments or questions during public comment, but our board office will follow up on board-related issues raised during public testimony. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration of others. We request that complaints about individual employees be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. If you have additional items or materials you would like to provide the board or superintendent, we ask that you give them to board manager, Ms. Roseanne Powell, to distribute to us. Presenters, we'll have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. During the first two minutes of your testimony, a green light will appear. When you have one minute remaining, a yellow light will go on, and when your time is up, the red light will go on and a buzzer will sound. We respectfully ask that you conclude your comments at that time. We appreciate your input and thank you for your cooperation. Ms. Bradshaw, do we have anyone signed up for student or public comment?
Yes, we have public comment. We have Maxine Dexter.
Welcome.
I don't know if I've ever been here, but there's only one person. Okay. All right. So Maxine Dexter, D E X T E R. Good evening. I'm a PPS parent. My son is at West Sylvan and will be a Lincoln freshman next year. I'm a physician at Kaiser Permanente, and the following opinions are my own. I was deeply disappointed to hear of this board's recent decision to remove the school clinic from the new Lincoln plan. My understanding is a lack of interest in staffing these clinics by area healthcare providers were a large contribution to your decision, so I'm here to speak up. Currently, there is not a single PPS student clinic west of the Willamette, and Grant High School has a clinic but no services. This is true even though PPS's own education specifications for a comprehensive high school states that each school should have a clinic. Some of the services currently delivered in PPS school clinics are critical and include routine in sports, physicals, immunizations, mental health services, and routine lab tests. Without a clinic, students in our schools cannot access even basic birth control from a school nurse, and approximately one-third of all high school students nationally are sexually active. In 2017, Oregon ranked first in the nation for the number of homeless youth at over 22,000, and that increased in just one year alone. In 2016, 14.9% of Lincoln students reported suicidal ideation, while 48 students actually reported attempting suicide. In an age where toxic stress and adverse childhood events are clearly understood to impact the health of our children, it is incomprehensible to me that we would consider using bond money to intentionally build a school that will last 100 years, 100 years without the proper facilities to address this growing health crisis. I want my son and all students to have agency to address their health needs in an age-appropriate, confidential, and familiar setting. If the plan does not include a health center now, there will never be one. We cannot anticipate what the needs will be two or more generations from now. Students will always deserve care. I hear that some wealthier students don't need access to school-based care. As a privileged family with insurance, I agree, we have options, and yet I'd like to share with you the reality. Appointments are hard to get, are expensive, a majority of parents are working, and efficient public transportation is not reliable. Getting in for medical or mental care is hard. Statistics clearly show children are not getting the care they need as the cost and scarcity of care is, continues to increase. A school clinic establishes equitable and community-specific care for all students and should be a priority. Developing a system where students have the power to address their care needs at school will benefit everyone and, from a system standpoint, could be an innovative model across the state. Finally, is it possible that we did not fully explore innovative staffing options for the school clinics? Having helped lead one of the organizations, I can think of many innovative ways to provide care to our students. Imagine rotating providers, telemedicine support, robust mental health and wellness care, student-led clinic boards deciding what care they need, and integrated healthcare tracks so that students can have access to training while working in the clinic. It is on the district, your board, to advocate for the health of each of our children, and I hope you'll reverse your decision and do just that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Please feel free to connect with, there we go. Thank you for submitting your testimony.
Chair Konstant.
Yes.
I know it's generally our practice not to ask questions, which I won't, and not to necessarily engage, although I do that, I find that somewhat frustrating sometimes. I, I did just want to, I just wanted to say, because I think it, it's important to make it on the record, as we did when we made the vote, that I don't think anyone up here disagrees with the things you said. I know I don't. I desperately want to see a health clinic at Lincoln. And the issue before us was not whether we wanted a health clinic, it was whether we could actually have one. And I think what I would ask is, particularly as a medical provider, I would really welcome any innovative ideas you have. My understanding is that the staff did quite a bit with Grant to see if they could find a provider to fill that space, was on it, was not able to. So I just, I just want to be really clear. It's not a decision about whether we want it or not, it's about whether we can. And if there are innovative ways and doctors want to come together and figure out ways to bring a health clinic, like, I'm all ears for that. So thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
So I, I do think it's, I'm having some regrets. The hundred-year concept, right, right now, I mean, we're in a hopefully short-term period, but there may be other remedies besides going local going forward. I'll just leave it at that, and we can talk more later.
I'd also like to say that these clinics, if they're dispersed geographically, would be excellent emergency preparedness at the community level. So to have facilities, medical facilities, first aid, you know, basic facilities in neighborhoods would be beneficial when we have the big earthquake.
Well, since everybody else had a chance to say something, I'm going to jump in because I, first of all, I want to really thank you for coming to testify because I think there are other solutions that, and ways in which we can do it. Other districts are providing care, and I think, I, I welcome your engagement and other healthcare professionals that we've heard from over the last week since we had our last board meeting of ways in which they foresee we could address the, the barriers that maybe exist, but they're not overcomeable. So thank you.
Okay, I'll chime in too, which is echo Director Scott, which is if there are providers out in the community who have some innovative options and solutions they want to bring forward to the district, please do so and do so quickly as the design process is underway. But I also wanted to say that it's not an either-or proposition with Lincoln High School. We have a, a school nurse there, which is a service that we'll hear about later through MESD, and also robust and in fact, really innovative mental health services that are provided by the district and overseen by our nationally recognized school psychologist at Lincoln. So definitely in need of more mental health services and supports there as well as everywhere else in our district, but it's not an either-or proposition. Okay, Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to provide your report?
Yes, Chair Konstant. Thank you. Good evening, directors, and to our listening and present audience. This evening, I, I thought I'd want to make sure to highlight some recent and current news, especially in that it relates to resources and investments. And, and because we're thinking deeply about how we make decisions about where to invest new funds, particularly in the coming school year, there is some emerging thinking as well as some early indications of how current strategic investments are showing some promise now, and how other organizations are choosing to invest in our district, our work, our educators, which ultimately impact, we hope, on our students' outcomes. So we're in final stages of developing our student investment account application. One of the key inputs in this work is what we've heard and learned from the broader community and our stakeholders. You heard in an earlier presentation, the effort to gather input from our educators, our students, our community, opportunities out in the community to weigh in. And we're crosswalking our planning efforts, given that input. You see here, some of those themes that, that emerged, and they won't sound as a surprise, we've, we've had a number of lengthy conversations about these, but things like making sure that a level of social-emotional supports exists for, for our students, that we keep a racial equity lens, that our curriculum is culturally sustaining or responsive, that we find ways to not just enhance partnerships with community providers, but increase the coordination, and that we also think about what, what an optimal student-to-adult ratio might look like for, for students and educators. And so guided by a lot of this input and feedback and consistent with the parameters and intent of the student investment account portion of the Student Success Act, we are seeing a number of key themes emerge in that thinking. And just wanted to take a moment to sort of provide this little bit of an update for, for the community in the same way that we've been able to do that with individual board members. What you will see is a grouping of strategies emerge that do speak to increased academic support and making sure those targeted interventions are in place, in particular for, for those students that have been historically underserved, which is in fact, a goal of the SIA. For sure, we want to be attentive to the expressed need and experience in our schools to have the capacity to address the social-emotional, mental, and behavioral health needs. And we also know that we can't be successful doing this work in isolation, and so how do we find innovative ways to continue engaging valued community partners, especially in ways that are more culturally responsive than perhaps we've, we've done in the past? A few other themes includes what might we do to continue making incremental improvements towards realizing more optimal student-teacher ratios? We made a commitment to continue working towards some more ideal goals for class size. I think in the package that will emerge, which we will go over more formally in our application at the end of the month, is, is to continue demonstrating progress, not just at a, a grade level or two, but in, at grade levels where we've continued to see that our classrooms are most impacted. I know that it's important to us, we've had numerous conversations on as well, is that we continue to find ways to expand elective access and access to visual and performing arts education, especially in school communities that have not had the benefit of complete pathways in the arts disciplines. And so something that I'll preview is that we'll, we'll continue to make an incremental improvement there. And in Portland Public Schools, we recognize that there's been a longstanding curriculum debt. So how do we continue to refresh and newly adopt quality instructional materials that our educators and our students have access to, and the kind of professional development or training that is beneficial to, to our, to our educators? And, and we think if we continue making, you know, those concerted coherent efforts, that, that it'll, it'll make a difference. And because I don't think we've had a regular meeting of the board since the state of Oregon released its graduation rate date, I didn't want to gloss over those stats. So for the broader community's benefit, just wanted to take a moment to point out that some of our efforts are, are continuing to contribute to continued improvement in our ultimate outcomes for students by way of improved graduation rates. So I think if, if folks caught the media, they will have heard that PPS's overall graduation rate average is at an 80 and a half percent, which is slightly above the, the state average, with many of our student groups continuing to, to narrow that gap. I think what's impressive is sort of the trend and what that narrowing of the gap rate looks like, particularly for Latino students over the last three years that have had a 7.1-point increase, African-American students that have posted a nearly five-point increase. But all of our students have continued to show improvement, and so we're certainly looking to continue accelerating the work and, and the experienced outcomes and narrowing that gap, and certainly staying above average. This is just a line graph that continues to, to track the, both the statewide trend and the green line there, and, and the red PPS trajectory represented in the red. So I do want to thank once again, because I do think these continued improved outcomes are testament to the collective effort of our students, educators, and community partners. We'll continue to be increasingly intentional about our commitment to better support every one of our students, particularly those that have not historically experienced those equitable outcomes we want to see. And I know that we have been taking a number of questions, sort of from folks wondering, you know, what are we continuing to attribute these positive results? So I'd be remiss not to mention, we like to think that part of it is giving our high school students more special attention. The adoption of a student success team model made it possible to be more robust as a result of full funding in Measure 98. I think that investment has continued to allow a greater counseling support to, to our students, the increased CTE courses, which we know is proving to be an engaging, an engaging way for, for students to remain on track, that these are a couple of the drivers. And of course, these improved outcomes over time are not just testament to the work in our high schools, but to all our educators and support staff along our students' journey to graduation. So we're encouraged by the continued positive results, and we're going to continue to, to double down on those efforts. Since we're talking about investments, I wanted to call intention, attention to investments that business and philanthropy are also making to the work here in the Portland Public Schools. Last week, joined by some of our directors, we were at Bridger School, where we shared the exciting announcement that Portland General Electric is making a three-year, quarter-million-dollar investment to the Fund for Portland Public Schools. We're excited about this. This donation's going to allow us to accelerate the creation of a first-of-its-kind comprehensive K-12 curriculum that explores the causes and consequences of climate change as well as potential solutions. So this represents the first major investment in the fund for PPS. This is the first of many, we, we anticipate, but we want to express our gratitude to BGE for supporting innovation in PPS and for paving the way for, for other funders. PGE's investment supports an effort that is a result of a direct response to, to much student advocacy and, and ongoing commitment from this PPS board and district leadership. So climate science is of foundational importance to all of us, and we're eager to accelerate this work. So not to be outdone, four of our schools, Cesar Chavez, Fabian, Harrison Park, and Marysville, were announced recently as the newest participants in the Verizon Innovative Learning Initiative. Through this program, all students and staff at these four schools will have comprehensive one-to-one device access and Verizon-supported internet access at home and at school. To talk a bit more about this program, which we're excited about, and through a competitive process, we're invited to participate in this partnership, what this experience might look like at schools, I want to welcome Kevin Crotchet, our Director of Learning Technologies here at PPS. And some of you know as a longtime PPS educator and school administrator, welcome Mr. Crotchet.
Thank you so much. Thanks so much for giving me this moment. Thank you, Superintendent. I also wanted to note that our CTO, Don Wolf, really wanted to be here as well, but is away at a conference. But really to thank both our superintendent and our CTO for working together, bringing a lot of folks together to write, revise, and apply for the digital promise, I'll call it VILS for short, grant. As Superintendent was just saying, the VILS grant will come to four schools. I think it's important to note, last time I sat here, we were talking about TechSmart, which is a K5 initiative, and the VILS program is a six-eight initiative. You'll note that all four of these schools are K8 schools, and so the complementary continuum that we actually talked about the last time I saw you, was creating that foundation and that continuum that creates these digital learning opportunities and enriches technology-enhanced instruction as a foundation for all of our schools, and we see this continued in this opportunity. The VILS grant brings not only the connected devices, one-to-one, but these devices are take-home devices. The schools applied due to, in part, criteria meeting socially-economic and underrepresented populations, but also digital readiness of the school itself. Very robust process included digital, digital promise representatives coming to the schools and interviewing principals, teachers, and students. And we're really quite, quite thrilled to see these four schools be there. I wanted to point out in this picture, this picture's a great representation of some of the work. I think a lot of times, I know that I've sat in front of you three times and used some terms that I know what I'm envisioning, digital learning and technology-enhanced instruction. But if I can just take one minute to kind of use that image as something to extend our thinking, I think a lot of times, we have this image of, of technology-enhanced instruction from our experiences of that computer lab. One student in front of one screen, experiencing something very individualized. And that's just simply not what digital learning and technology-enhanced instruction is today. Indeed, in this picture, we see three people, one's teacher, obviously involved in some very direct co-use with that student, potentially engaging in some conversations, collaboration about what's exactly happening. The other student, while having headphones on, right, is also doing some collaboration and some co-use with those kids and with the, the teacher and the student. And very often, you'll see that we use one device and two student models. That's very specifically intended to create that collaboration and communication that we know pulls on that cognitive load that creates the learning environment. So anyway, I just wanted to share that as I was looking at that image as well. With that, oh, I failed to mention that this program also comes with incredibly robust professional learning and professional development. Each school will receive a full-time innovative instructional coach, that's for the two years of the program. Those coaches will work directly with my team, with Otis, as well as with OTL and TechSmart as well, so combining those efforts. That digital promise group will work with us both in webinars as well as in seminars that they take our coaches to, which they call coaching camps. One happens coming up here in April, and then again in August and in October. Pretty intense, again, looking at really technology-enhanced instruction, so.
Thank you, Director Crotchet. And thank you to Verizon for welcoming PPS into the family of digital promise districts around the country. I think you heard a little bit about how significant that award is. Our hope is to have a very positive implementation and hopefully merit the expansion into, into more schools. So thank you, Director Crotchet, for, for your support and leadership in this area. So we talked a little bit about climate justice, we talked a little bit about technology and some investments, and we're a wonderfully diverse district, so I, I gotta leave you with a gratuitous shot of the arts. Here we have singers from Cleveland, Franklin, Grant, Lincoln, Madison, Roosevelt, and Wilson High Schools, as well as Beaumont, Beverly Cleary, DaVinci Jackson, Laurel Hursland, Robert Gray, Roseway Heights, and West Sylvan Middle Schools, because there's a lot of singing going on out there. What you see here in this picture is sort of the grand finale of our recent all-city choir event, so kudos to, to all our choir students out there. That concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Director Moore, would you like to introduce our next item, which is in honor of Rosa Parks' birthday today?
Today, February 4th, is Rosa Parks' birthday. She's an iconic figure of the civil rights era who chose the tactic of refusing to give up her seat on the bus. On January 22nd, the Trimate Board chose to acknowledge and celebrate her act of resistance to highlight the rights of all people by passing a resolution in her honor. Portland Public Schools, along with several local organizations, endorsed the resolution. And beginning in 2021, next year, Transit Equity Day, Rosa Parks' birthday, will be a fair, free transit holiday on Trimate.
Yes, here, here, here. All right. Continuing with our ongoing policy work, we have a first reading of the district funds for purchase of gifts, meals, and refreshments. Vice Chair Moore, could you please introduce this item that's coming out of your Board Policy Committee?
This is, oops. This policy is codifying some changes that have occurred already in terms of district practices, and it is responsive to the Secretary of State audit from last year that specifically called out the absence of a clear policy regarding district funds, the use of district funds for meals, refreshments, and gifts. And it's a, it's a relative, it's a, thankfully, relatively short policy, and it is posted on the website and, I'm sorry, I'm impinging on your.
Go ahead.
It's now posted on the website, the public. It's now posted on the website, public comment period is twenty-one days, with the last comment being February, uh, last date to comment being February twenty-fifth. The Board will hold a second reading of the policies at the March third meeting.
All right, thank you, Director Moore. Everyone can find that online. Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to introduce this next item regarding the Multnomah Education Service District Annual Menu of Services?
Yes, I'd love to bring up our dear colleague here in Multnomah, MESD Superintendent Sam Breyer, familiar to many of us. He's here in his annual tradition to tell us about the local service plan. Welcome, Mr. Breyer.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Guerrero. Chair Konstant, Board of Directors, it's a pleasure to be here. I am Sam Breyer, Superintendent of Multnomah ESD. I've asked, been asked to speak briefly about the services that ESD provides in general and specifically to Portland Public. I'm very proud of the work that MESD does to support districts and students in Multnomah County, and I also recognize there's nothing, nothing more thrilling than a presentation on obscure government agency, so I will keep my remarks brief, and instead what I'll do is provide a quick overview of ESDs, a quick summary of the services we provide, and then answer any questions that the Board may have on that, and I will do that in ten minutes or less. I have also spared you a PowerPoint, but everything I cover is in two infographics that we've sent out in advance. So, starting from the beginning, ESDs have existed in Oregon for, in some form or another, for more than a hundred years. They're an evolution of the old county school system. We do exist in Oregon statute and have a specified mission to assist school districts and the Department of Education in achieving Oregon's educational goals by providing equitable, high-quality, cost-effective, and locally-responsive educational services at a regional level. The important part of that is the regional and the locally-responsive. As a result, there are nineteen ESDs in Oregon, and they all operate a little or sometimes a lot differently. So, what I'll speak to is specific only to Multnomah ESD. Quickly, our, how we are funded. ESDs are funded in the state school fund. They receive a percentage of the state school fund, four-point-five percent to be exact. Then that amount is apportioned to the nineteen ESDs according to student enrollment by weighted ADM. For Multnomah ESD, we are the second largest. Northwest Regional is just a little bit larger, but we receive sixteen percent of that amount. We then apportion that out to our component districts, the eight districts in Multnomah County, and for Portland Public, your share of that is just over twenty-one million dollars annually. We then work through an annual process required by statute to determine what services we offer, and that needs to be in cooperation with our component school districts. That process is constant and ongoing. If you were to pick a starting point, it would be spring probably where we accept requests for new services that we would be potentially providing more than a year out. And we use that time to co-design the services with the districts and make sure we can do some accurate modeling and costing, because we do offer all of our services on a true-cost basis, and so we try and get those costs as accurate as possible upfront, so there's not any surprise and reconciliation on the end. Then throughout the year, we work closely with district directors around, oh, switch something, okay. Yep, that's it for where I'm at right now. So then we work year-round to do, to take feedback and adjust the local service plan, and then we create a narrative of all of the services we offer, which is what's before you tonight. That narrative, the local service plan, is required to be adopted on an annual basis. It's important to note that adopting that simply allows us to provide the service, it does not obligate any district to purchase those services. We do offer our services in Multnomah ESD on a full menu basis, which means that districts can provide whatever services works for them, and if they do not spend all of their allocation with us, can actually take the dollars out in transit dollars. That's a really important feature that's fairly unique to Multnomah ESD. It's important to me because I believe that it's our responsibility to provide the highest-quality, most cost-effective services to students, and if Multnomah ESD can provide those, fantastic. If we can't, you should be able to select them somewhere else. And it keeps us in the position of needing to be responsive and constantly improving our services, so it's a great benefit both to my agency but also to the community as well. Just as a note, Portland Public takes forty percent of your allocation in those transit dollars and spends sixty percent of your allocation with MESD. That that I just described covers about two-thirds of our work. The other third is regional contract and support services or contracts with other districts, and that comprises another third. So, what does all of this mean for Portland Public? Portland Public spends your services in this way, or spends your allocation in this way with us. About twelve percent of it goes to our instructional services department, thirteen percent on special education services, thirty percent to school health, five percent to technology administration, and then again about forty percent is transit money that you take out. Some specific examples of each of those are provided. On the instructional services side, the two largest purchase areas are, more than a hundred and seventy students were served at Helenview High School last year. That is an alternative high school that supports students who have perhaps been in incarceration, aren't enrolled in school, or are not attending school. The largest is probably what Multnomah ESD is most well-known for, which is outdoor school. So, in last year, we provided outdoor school to more than thirty-four-hundred Portland Public sixth graders, almost thirteen-hundred fourth graders. And then I do remember last time I presented this board, you inquired about and encouraged me to capture the numbers of high school students, so you'll see that included as well. And so, almost nine-hundred high school students participated as student leaders at outdoor school. School health is an area that's come up in a number of ways. Portland Public does, does have what is considered the flagship model, at least for the state of Oregon, around school health, and we're pleased to provide the school nurses and the school health assistants that serve your schools. We also support health screening, immunization, and coordination with Multnomah County Health. On the special education side, two of your larger purchase areas are social, emotional, and behavior support programs at our Creeks. We served forty-four students in last school year at the Creeks, and those are really designed to support and skill up students so that they are able to return and be successful at their homeschool. Our goal is to do that as quickly as possible. And then we do provide a functional living skills program at our Wheatley School, where a number of school districts come together and we create a rich and supportive environment for students experiencing disabilities that have significant sensory and communication supports needs. Finally, it's not specifically up there, but do just want to mention technology since it just came up. We are partners in the Cascade Technology Alliance, which takes regional efficiency from a single ESD level to multiple ESDs and supports more than fifty districts. We are actually working very closely with Portland Public right now, particularly on the backend technology services and doing more with your network and other support services to provide those as effectively and economically efficiently as possible. Finally, just want to mention, in addition to the services we provide directly to you, one reason I came to MESD was to, because as a component school district superintendent, I saw a need for greater collaboration and coordination across districts and across the county. Thrilled to report that school districts are asking us to do more of that. It's an honor and a pleasure to work with Superintendent Guerrero, who is a strong partner and also a leader in those conversations. And as one example, we all are, of course, terrified of our coming workforce needs and recognizing the need to diversify our workforce, and so over the past year, we have been convening district partners and higher education partners specifically around Grow Your Own Pathways, and we expect to launch several new pathways across the county in the coming year. We're also looking closely as our component districts complete their SIA plans, and what we'll do is identify opportunities to support regionally across all of those plans as well. So, in short, it's a pleasure to be Superintendent of Multnomah ESD and thrilled and honored to support Portland Public, and I would be happy to answer any questions the Board may have.
Thank you so much. We'll get the motion on the table and then see if there are questions and discussion. The Board will now consider Resolution Number six-zero-four-nine, Annual Multnomah Education Service District Resolution Process. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Director Bailey moves, and Director Moore seconds the motion to adopt Resolution six-zero-four-nine. Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment on Resolution six-zero-four-nine?
No.
Is there any additional Board discussion on this resolution?
I have a number of questions, and they're kind of just all over the place. So, I'm gonna start with one relating to outdoor school. I, the Oregon Catholic Conference, reached out to me asking about why PPS had turned down, going through PPS to get outdoor school services. Couldn't they just go to the MESD? Why, why would they go through us?
Not knowing the specific conversation, I can't provide a specific answer to that question, but we would be happy to talk with anyone that's interested in those.
Because they're just, you're a provider that's, maybe somebody else has an answer.
Thank you.
I have been working with some of your staff, so, we have, we, we did actually meet with them here in our office and went to the ESD who was willing to consider that because they offer, but they receive both the revenue and offer the service. And then when the ESD tried to work with Oregon State University Extension Service, the, the way the statute is currently written, it isn't allowable to be used on private schools. So, it would be, at this point, the private schools would need to work with OSU to see if there was going to be a change.
Or change the statute.
Right.
Okay. They just need to be told that versus, I mean, the impression is that PPS is like not accepting.
And that has been shared with them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do know the context. We have worked on that, on both working with a number of private schools and advocating on the OUS side, but we're stuck in between resolutions right now.
But it's not a PPS issue.
It is not a PPS issue. You are absolutely correct.
Make sure that was the case. Then, you provide Oregon Trail services for fourth graders?
Correct.
And who gets that? It doesn't look like it's a district-wide. Is that just an individual school can, is contracting with?
We would work with your district on which schools would like to attend. I don't know the process for determining that internally in Portland Public.
We had that last year?
I don't know the specifics. Director Brim Edward, certainly we could look into the specifics and what the process is for selecting and who's gone historically year-over-year.
It just looks like from the chart that not everybody, like, it's a selective service. I'm interested, but that's open to any fourth-grade class and they just, but the, the service, the district requests it.
Correct.
Okay.
And then we would work with the district to provide that at whatever capacity we could.
Okay, and then my last question is, the Oregon Health Authority, this kind of goes back to the public comment earlier tonight, the Oregon Health Authority has put together this comparison chart of Oregon school health services, and it has, I think, a great diagram that is for the average person, pretty easy to understand, that shows like school nurses and then school-based health clinics, and it's a Venn diagram, so here's what school nurses provide, here's what clinics provide, and then here's the sort of overlapping services. And based on my conversations with a number of providers and high school leadership model, they are looking at the elementary and middle schools have different needs than somewhat for high schools, and the school-based clinics sometimes looks like provide more comprehensive services. So I'm curious whether MESD ever looked at, so you have sort of a excellent model around school nursing services, whether you've looked at, you know, how to get this other side of the Venn diagram, that's school-based health clinics?
Yeah, so traditionally.
So we could, like, we could buy that from MESD versus trying to get an individual provider to offer it?
Yeah, and this is a conversation that has risen recently in a number of ways. So traditionally in Multnomah County, most of those services have rested with the school-based health center. We would be more than willing to engage in some conversations and design about what we could possibly provide and work with.
So, is there, there's not any sort of law that says, for, for example, I mean, one of the issues that's been raised, like, the school nurses can't provide contraceptives or fanny, fanny planting, but that school-based health clinics can? Is there some reason, like, why that's not part of the suite, or, or is it, like, that's part of what's under discussion?
There has, so I don't know of any reason that it's specifically not part of the suite either. There was a conversation at some point and the services evolved this way, or it has been largely ceded to school-based, based health centers. Looked into this today, based on a question I received this morning. There's nothing structurally that would stop us from having that conversation. We'd have to examine and perhaps adjust district policy for the districts where we're providing it and look internally at MESD policy around what our school nurses do with contraception and sexual health, for example, but there's no structural or legal impediment to those conversations.
Correct.
And we'd be more than willing to engage in those.
This is something that we continue to investigate. Do you have any more questions? Director Moore?
Sort of following up, do you have, are any of your nurses physicians assistants?
They're not. Right now, we just have nurses, so one thing we would need to explore is potential staffing models or changes that would allow us to do some things that currently now school, school nurses do not do.
Okay, thank you. That's a great question.
Any other questions?
One thing I just wanted to note in your presentation, you talked about, when you were talking about the transit dollars, services that we don't opt into, but I think it's worth noting, especially for new members, that the, the primary reason we opt out of services is from, from MESD is because we have the economy of scale to provide them ourselves, not because we're rejecting their provision in any way, just that we're different than, that, that's a really important service that you provide for smaller school districts that, to be able to come together, so.
I appreciate that notice and clarification. We just know it's not unusual in most regions, the largest school district in the region engages in a lower level of service, and there are other districts in Multnomah County that do take transit dollars as well.
Yeah, I think it's worth noting that, so, for example, just the school nurse model, it's like you have a core competency, you have some economies of scale, that I think it's a, would be a really interesting conversation about how to evolve that, because I'm sure PPS is not the only school district, not only in MESD, but in other ESDs that could utilize a different structured model and building off sort of your, the ESD's core competencies. Seems like it would make a lot of sense versus, like, creating our own, our own, our own system where there could be synergies or learnings and collaboration across districts within the ESD.
Yeah, thank you. Always excited to engage in those conversations, and we'll note with the Student Success Act and increased focus on school health, a number of districts outside the region are looking to MESD and how we can potentially support that or sharing around the models that work with our districts.
And it is interesting that you are in the middle of shifting trends, because as we are losing school-based health clinics in our district, other districts in East Multnomah County are gaining them when they didn't have them before.
Correct.
Chair Konstant, since we have Superintendent Breyer here in front of us, maybe a little bit outside of the, the local plan here, but since we have you, could you just speak for a minute to the ESD's role in helping to provide technical support on planning and implementation of Student Success Act, which is consuming everybody right now's activities, as well as the ESD's role in the Educac, EAC portion, Educator Advancement Council as well? I think there's a lot of sort of questions or misperceptions, so be helpful if you could clear that up.
Absolutely, my pleasure. I will start with the Student Success Act. So, in that, ESDs are provided a certain amount of money, twenty-four million total. It is separate from the student investment account. It's in the bucket of statewide services of the Student Success Act to provide technical support and implementation across the region. For MESD, that amounts to a little over, I believe roughly three-point-seven million over the biennium to provide that support. On the front end, in this first year, we've worked with a number of districts around convening and connecting their student success leads for the planning purposes. We've also worked closely with community-based and culturally-specific organizations around supporting engagement for some districts. In our region, because we have a number of large, very capable districts, the planning support and technical assistance has been lighter, but that is what I was referencing earlier when I mentioned that in the coming year, as SIA plans develop, one thing that we are able to do is look across that and figure out what we can do to support implementation of those plans and provide support at either the technical assistance or the structural and implementation level. The dollars are specifically unfortunately not allowed for direct service to students, but perhaps we can identify things that there are structures we could build regionally that would provide an efficiency and allow you to spend more money on direct service to students within the Student Success within the Student Success Act. That is actually a little bit related to the local service plan in that that plan on how the ESD dollars is spent will be developed in a similar way in collaboration with the component districts, and then the boards will need to adopt that plan as well. For this current year, it will come to you likely in June of the year, but in future years, that will be interwoven with the local service plan. On the EAC and specifically the Regional Educator Network, that's one of those contracts we hold where the use and the allocation of resources is defined by a body outside of Multnomah ESD. So, we, in partnership with Clackamas ESD, hold the support contract that convenes the Regional Educator Network. But what that network does and how those resources are distributed, how and when those resources are distributed are determined by the Educator Advancement Council at the state level. And so, we are doing everything we can to support that, and my consistent advocacy has been to get that to districts as quickly and effectively as possible. But that is a separate allocation structure and a separate decision-making body. Did that answer what you hoped would answer, Superintendent Guerrero?
It's been my understanding thus far. Thank you for sharing it out loud.
Any further questions or discussion from the board?
Just offline, a little more, MMO kind of going a little more in-depth about the EAC would be helpful, I think. And I think I'm not alone, that whole middle section of the Student Success Act is still quite, and some of it's very definite, but some of it is still to come in terms of how it's defined.
You are not alone.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent Breyer. The board will now vote on Resolution 6049. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 6049 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Lateral voting yes.
She just said it for me.
I just said that at the same...
I know what she's gonna say.
I saw you.
It's probably better that way.
Actually, I was distracted, Maxine, because I realized that we forgot your report.
No, I didn't want to do it tonight.
Okay. You sure?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry.
No, you're good.
That's why I was distracted. With Student Representative Lateral voting?
Yes.
Thank you, Superintendent Breyer.
Okay. You had your DSC meeting, but no, no report. Okay. Superintendent Guerrero, the next item is the Construction Career Pathways Regional Framework. Would you like to tell us what that's all about?
I'll be happy to introduce who is going to tell us all about it. Our very own Courtney Westling here will be joined by a guest who will tell you a little bit about a growing emphasis in, with Metro to think about how construction pathways might play into an objective to help diversify workforce. So, thanks for joining us this evening. Do you want to introduce our guest?
Thanks for putting this on the agenda for discussion and hopefully adoption. With me tonight is Rahi Reddy, who's the Director of Equity, sorry, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion at Metro and has been working tirelessly on this project. So, she's going to give you kind of the 101 version of what all this means, what C2P2 means. It's a pretty good acronym. I really like saying it. And then I'll give you a little bit of the PPS angle. Just noting that I'm not our contracting expert. Emily is not available tonight, family commitment, but I have some answers. And then if there are other questions that I can't answer, I'll get her to give me those answers and we'll provide them back to you. So, Rahi, take it away.
Good evening, Chair and Directors. Thank you so much for inviting us to present on the Construction Careers Pathways Framework. Of course, I always have to say I'm a proud PPS parent. My daughter attends Bridger and Go Wildcats. Just so happy to be here and to really talk about construction careers in connection with our future and the opportunities we're providing for that future workforce that are really right in our schools today. So, thank you. So, we wanted to first start out by saying that Portland Public Schools has been a fantastic partner with us on this development of our Construction Careers Framework, and we're really excited to be able to come full circle back to PPS and continue this conversation here. So, I want to get the clicker. Oh, yeah. Yeah. You got it? Okay, great. So, the Construction Careers Pathways Project really aims to capture the opportunity publicly-funded projects created to advance racial equity by creating career pathways into good construction careers for people of color and women. The work, this work really supports our equity goal, equity goals that many of our agencies have adopted or are adopting. And for Metro, the reason the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Directors here talking to you, for us, the strategic plan to advance racial equity, diversity, and inclusion, which was our council-adopted plan, had a very specific ask, action item for us, which was for Metro to work on convening our regional partners to figure out ways that we could work together to diversify the construction sector, especially on our publicly-funded projects. And so, the framework really provides some key opportunities for us. So, number one is to increase career opportunities for people of color and women to meet the regional demand we have for our construction, all the construction that's happening and will continue to happen at least for the next decade around the public sector. It calls, it creates strategies for us to have regional coordination so we could leverage our collective efforts, establish consistent recruitment, training, and retention policies and practices, and really to think about through that collective action, how do we have some high road standards in our construction sector and really have an impact on that? So, Metro and the City of Portland originally co-funded a construction workforce market study that we partnered with Work Systems, Inc. to produce, which was published in 2018. And in that study was really kind of like the foundation and the baseline of what we needed to do in the region to meet the demand for the construction workforce. And the report was also groundbreaking because it included qualitative analysis, so interviews with workers and apprenticeship directors and many stakeholders in the system to talk about what were those key items that we had to pay attention to, to create the retention that we need in the sector for people of color and women. And so, from that workforce study, we convened a public owner work group of which PPS staff were participants in, and that launched in July of 2018. And so, if you look on the timeline here, you know, Phase 1 was really the building the foundation with our market study. We, in Phase 2, and through that, through 2018 and 2019, we put together, from all of the 16 agencies that came together, we were able to produce a comprehensive framework. And as, we're right now in this phase of agencies adopting that Construction Careers Framework and moving into Phase 4, and just today, we had our first strategic planning session with our regional partners, those who have adopted the framework, to plan out what we're going to do working together over the next 18 months. So, we're ambitious. We try to move fast because we know the demand is high, and we know that the need is so great for people of color and women. So, I want to just turn your attention to a little bit on the market study, which we thought was just monumental. So, the finding really first created the need and created the crisis that we know we're all experiencing on our projects, which is, a part of the market study was to look across the region and identify green-lighted projects that were going to be in development. We identified 81, and that was well before the Metro Housing Bond and other bond initiatives. And in those 81 projects, we estimated for, there would be a need for 14,000 construction workers in that time, in the next decade. So, in order for us to address the shortage, we need a comprehensive strategy to diversify the workforce. So, I know for many agencies, when we talk about diversifying in construction, we talk about contracting and diversifying our contractors. And we know that that is a good strategy to ensure that women and minority-owned firms can successfully bid on our projects and be able to participate in the work that we have. But we also know that selecting a contract of color does not necessarily mean the workforce is diverse, and that at the end of the day, everyone is drawing from the same pool of workforce. And so, our project is really looking at that workforce pathways and what's happening in that sector. What we also learned, oh, I'm going to do another click. Ooh. So, there's the problem statement. And so, now, one of the other things we learned in this market study is what is happening to this workforce? For every five construction workers that we have nearing retirement, so we have about a 17% retirement rate right now, only three new workers under the age of 24 are entering the workforce. The overall completion rate of apprenticeships, so getting through your Year 1 and Year 2 of your union or non-union apprenticeship, the overall completion rate is 46%. This is a tough industry and we know that. But when you look at women and people of color, that retention rate goes down, or completion rate goes down to 38% and 36%. Meanwhile, people of color and women face significant additional barriers to accessing careers in construction and remaining in the sector. And some of the reasons that workers have identified as reasons that they leave, in addition to the work being really difficult and the hours being long, there's also a culture of harassment. There's also an insular culture in the sector, and really, how you find work is based on who you know. So, these conditions are a major contributing factor to the rising cost of our projects because we're not able to retain the workers in the industry. So, we need a comprehensive strategy that makes sure all workers are able to enter the industry and build a successful career. So, before we jump into the strategy, I want to just provide a quick primer on what a pathway in construction looks like. So, we know that it, you don't go into construction and just automatically know how to do a trade. You have to learn it over time. And learning it over time means both learning the skill and also being mentored in the skill. So, the first step for any worker and PPS grad or anyone who wants to get into the industry is to first make a connection to a pre-apprenticeship program. And so, that is the front line for anybody that wants to get into the sector. And for many pre-apprenticeship programs, they're able to provide lots of job readiness skills. They provide services like childcare and transportation assistance, in addition to some base-level training and exposure to the trades. The next step, after going through a 10-week pre-apprenticeship program, is to apply to an apprenticeship program for a particular trade. And we know that once folks really complete their pre-apprenticeship program, that they have an opportunity to select a trade of their choice and then apply to get into an apprenticeship. And in that process, there's a lot of barriers that happen for people as they navigate into apprenticeship programs. Once they're in the apprenticeship programs, some apprenticeship programs could last three years, some, like, if you want to be an electrician, last five years. And this is really where they learn their trade. This is where workers are getting both in-the-classroom training and training on the jobs. So, being placed on jobs is critical because that's where you get the real experience to further your apprenticeship. And the last piece of this journey, after four years, is to get a certificate of completion and move out of an apprenticeship program into a journey-level credentialed career. And that's where we know is the jumping-off point for workers. So, completing and being a journey-level tradesperson then allows you to be, move up in the ladder of a construction firm, be a superintendent, a foreman, and potentially start your own, start your own firm. So, for us, we wanted to make sure that we center the Construction Careers Framework really on the experience of these workers navigating through this system. So, 16 agencies, as I mentioned before, came together in July of 2018 to put together a framework. And we really were lucky in that we had the experience of all of those agencies at various levels to do, who have been doing some of this work, including PPS, bringing your experiences on many of your projects, and we were able to look at best practices and practices from across the country. And in that, we were able to distill down a core framework that we think would tie our region together with some of those best practices for being successful. So, the first key component is, is creating a demand. And what we discussed, looking at across the agencies and the goals that people have set, is setting goals that establish some real clarity on what we are asking our contractors to do. And the goals that we set, looking, which was really goals that were both grounded in reality of what we've been able to do, but also give us the push to do better. And the goals we set were 20% hours for apprentices, 14% for women, 25% for people of color on our projects. And to have each jurisdiction establish their thresholds of when these goals would kick in on what types of projects. And again, you know, it really depends on the scale of the projects that you're developing. And we also included a seven-year ramp-up period. So, especially when you think about the women goals, I know we're going to, Courtney's going to share some of where you have been on projects, but we know it's going to take consistent effort over time to get up to that 14%, and we want to push ourselves. We know that also, if you create the demand, we have to make sure the supply is ready to meet the demand of all these agencies that are setting these goals. And so, for us, investing in the workforce pathways and with our workforce partners is critical. Additionally, we also know that in addition to investing in the workforce supply, so working with our partners to scale up their ability to recruit workers into this industry, provide the wraparound services that they need to be successful, we also have to impact the culture on our job sites. One of the biggest reasons people leave the sector is because of toxic work environment, bullying, and harassment. And we have to create mechanisms that both intervene on the work sites with intervention, bystander intervention training, anti-harassment training, but also create the accountability mechanisms for our contractors. And finally, we need to have accountability across the agency. One of the greatest benefits of making sure that we can be transparent about how we're doing on our projects and how our contractors are doing is it creates pressure, public pressure, elected leaders' pressure on our contractors to do better on their projects, to continue to strive to get to the goals that we want. And lastly, we know that just in the time we've met together, there is so much learning that happens when we collaborate regionally, when we share experiences across our agencies of working with different contractors, learning where we're finding gaps in different trades. And so, one of the, the fourth key piece of this, of adopting this framework, is joining the regional collaboration and making sure that PPS can participate with other agencies like Metro and the City of Portland and Multnomah County to coordinate, to coordinate our investments, to coordinate our ability to intervene in smart ways in the sector. And so, I'm sorry, I know I'm taking a long time, so I'll rush through. One of the things that we wanted to deliver to agencies as we come here to present is to show the level of support that we have built across the region and across the stakeholders that are in this industry. And you'll see in this slide, these are all industry partners, community partners, contractors, union and labor partners who have signed pledges of support for this framework. They support the four elements that we have laid out here today and are committing to work with us ongoing. In addition to that, we have formally had adoptions of the framework by Metro, Prosper Portland, Multnomah County, and the City of Portland, and we are actively in discussions with jurisdictions, including TriMet, Clackamas County, and Washington County and PCC. And so, this is really just an example of the level of on-the-ground support that we're trying to build because we know that we cannot do this alone. We can't do this as an individual agency, and we can't do this as just one stakeholder. That really, it takes all of us pulling together to advance these opportunities. So, I'll hand it over to Courtney.
Actually, before you leave that slide, I just have a question of PPS. Do we require sort of our bond contractors that have a, above a certain threshold of business that they take the pledge? business that they take the pledge? Or is it discretionary? I noticed that we have some of our major contractors, but not all, and so I'm just wondering whether that's something that we're contemplating or that we've had discussions about.
So I'll get to, is this working? Okay, there it is. I'll get to the next, where the thresholds are, and then I can answer that question, and it's probably a longer conversation. So here's a little matrix that shows the framework category. So the seven, well, I guess four, kind of four slash seven categories within the C2P2 framework, and then it will show sort of where C2P2 is and then where we are. So the first one is setting diverse goals and, and diversity goals. So C2P2 says twenty percent of total hours worked in each apprenticeship will trade needs to be by state-registered apprentices, fourteen percent of total work hours performed by women and women-identified persons, and then twenty-five percent total work hours performed by people of color. We updated our administrative directive in October, you probably remember it because it wasn't very long ago, that, and we were already at the twenty percent labor hours in each apprenticeship will trade, that's pretty standard, I think. So we updated the aspirational goals on twenty-five percent for people of color and fourteen percent total female hours to align with the C2P2 framework. On the project thresholds, we have, in our workforce equity administrative directive, our thresholds apply to anything over two-hundred thousand and subcontractors over a hundred thousand. For the track and review progress, we've been in, we've worked in collaboration with the City of Portland since 2014 on how we monitor and track our progress and how we report compliance on this. So we've got, they've got the system, we work with them to get the information, and they keep track of that information. They have a much larger, they have the resources to do it, so we pay them to do it for us. Let's see, okay. The fourth category within the framework is the workforce agreement. This is also pretty commonly known as a project labor agreement. We do not do that right, also, C2P2, the boilerplate workforce agreements that establish workforce standards, that's what these are. They tend to be on very large projects. I think the courthouse did a PLA. I don't know all the projects that did a PLA, but they tend to be these very, these sort of mammoth projects. We do not have that currently. I think they're, talking to Emily, there's opportunity for future exploration. I think, you know, these are really tough to develop, and so it's just a, I think it's a capacity issue, but she could probably provide more detail on why that would be, why we haven't done it yet. And then on the anti-harassment policy, that's another place where we have not done that, but there's opportunity for future exploration. I think with this one, part of this goes to, do we make it more difficult to get bids when we already know that it's difficult? I don't necessarily think that's the answer or the reason that we shouldn't do it, but I think that's something that's worth contemplating as we look at this, at this particular category.
Can I, I'm just trying to understand what you just said.
Yeah, sorry.
So you're saying, because we are, we, for some, but not for our big projects that are probably very, that there's a nice margin for contractors, but that we might not add something like an anti-harassment requirement or training because it would lead to, I'm just trying to absorb what that implications are, is like, I mean, it seems like we should be setting high standards and...
I would agree with you. I don't think that we're saying, according, you know, my conversation with Emily, that we wouldn't want to contemplate this, we just haven't yet. I think in part because we would need staff to do it, I mean, it would be, we work with a lot of contractors, so there would, it would be a job to do the work, to get the, those agreements in place and those policies in place. But, but that, yes, we do want to have high standards for our contractors, and we have a lot of projects that we're working on. So it's, it's not something that we're doing currently. That doesn't mean that we can't do it in the future.
Because we have a lot of contracts for big dollars that we don't have any problem getting people willing to do the work. I mean, it's the small, I think it's the smaller ones, but it seems...
I agree with you. Okay. The regional fund for workforce supply. So on this one, this is an interesting one because we're in a little bit of a unique spot. So the recommendation for agencies is to adopt a funding model to support recruitment, training, retention, as well as wraparound support services, and there's been a conversation about a one percent, what do we call it? One percent, like a fund. One percent set-aside fund. How we've looked at this so far is, well, we're supplying the workforce by investing in construction pathways in our schools. So maybe we don't need to do the one percent, not donation, but, you know, fund the one percent bucket. So right now, seven of our comprehensive high schools have construction programs that are supported through the general fund, the federal Perkins grants, and Measure Ninety-Eight, with, I think, discussions around the new Lincoln as well.
Or the other way of looking at it is that we'll invest our one percent in our own CTE programs.
Exactly, exactly. You're such, so much more articulate than I am at this late hour, but yes, yeah, exactly. And then for regional collaboration, we've been participating as one of the sixteen members of the Public Owner Work Group and have committed to continue to do that and continue to be at these tables with our colleagues to map all of this out. This is still really new, where we would be only the fifth adoptee, so there's more work to do, and we would commit to continuing to have those conversations and work with Metro to keep moving forward and, and set high standards for ourselves and our colleagues in the community. So that is, oh, sorry, I forgot about this very data-heavy slide, which I know is actually really a very helpful slide. So this, this outlines kind of where we are. And it's, it's a little bit hard to see, I'm sorry that the titles are a little bit blurry. But if you see the bottom line, at the end, there's the twenty-four percent apprentice percentage, so that's over the twenty, twenty percent that was alluded to earlier. We have a lot of work to do on the female number, we knew that, and our colleagues are there too. It's very difficult. So it's a, we have, I think everybody wants to see more women in the trades, and we need to continue supporting organizations, organizations like Oregon Trades Women, and, you know, there's a strong effort in the community to work on this, but we need to continue pushing forward to get to that number. That fourteen is high.
So on that point, as I was reviewing the 2018 report, it talks about some of these barriers to some extent. It talks about job site culture, for example, and I think tonight you focused on sort of the pathway there, but did the study sort of, sort of begin to list out what some of those barriers look like? I mean, it could be changing rooms, it could be equipment that's not suitable for, and so how, how are, how are some of those being thought about as well? Because if it's actually not an inclusive work site, then, then why would you, that becomes a barrier, this job site culture.
Yes, absolutely. The study did go on to, is it, there were numerous ways that those barriers exist on the work site. So we all know, you know, and heard the stories around bullying and harassment culture. The problem with that is it creates an overall unsafe workplace. And in addition to that, addition barriers to that kind of exclusion, exclusionary behavior is, a big part of learning your trade is to learn it on the job. And what workers have found is not only the hostile culture, but not having the workers to mentor them, to train them, and to help them continue to learn their craft, because that's really what they're there to do. And so in the workforce study, they talk about different ways that we can provide with resources, some additional support, like case management, being much more coordinated with the contractor on how they're going to manage the work site. And on the anti-harassment training, what we've learned from Multnomah County, who's done the Green Dot training onsite, is that it is a participatory training. And what that means is, on the work site, everybody gets trained up all across the spectrum, and workers also are taught how to not only, you know, address something that's emerging or has happened, but to also be preventative, to be an ally, to be able to be a participant in reducing the bullying and the harassing, harassment and hazing. And I think these are all promising opportunities to intervene right at the very place where we're sending these diverse workers. And at the same time, we know we have to increase the number of these workers that are on a site, so you don't have very few people always, and just having, you know, kind of broader, a broader community that's not supportive. In addition to that, what we've also learned through not only the market study, but in the last year of working with our partners, is that many of the union trades themselves are in incorporating anti-harassment, anti-bias training in the union halls. So really trying to create new spaces that isn't just on the work site for workers to be able to address this. And we think that having enough resources where we're collectively investing in an effective training and what that system could look like, that every agency could employ with contractors, and creating incentives for contractors to pay attention to reports of harassment, to address things quickly, and be supportive of the workers, we have a ways to go. But I think we can't, if we just do it on each of our own projects, what happens is you build a model, and then it goes away once your project's done. But we'd love to have a model that can last all across our projects.
Before you, can I ask a question of this? And this is just trying to understand the chart a little bit. The OSM bond, 2012 and 2017, is that, those hours are those of our contractors?
Yeah.
So they're not PPS?
That's my understanding.
And then, maybe I'm just, the way it's presented, but it's confusing to me that you'd have all single digits from FAM, but you get to twenty percent. And then, a lot of these other ones are double digits, but when you get to the percentage, it's barely twenty percent over.
Are you looking across the row?
I, I am. I'm just wondering how the math works, because if you have, you know, so the second row, and maybe this is in Andrew.
Yeah, these aren't additive, so that's total percent of hours that are done by apprentices regardless of sex, race, ethnicity, so.
It could be male apprentices.
Yeah.
Male apprentices are included in that twenty percent.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you for the clarification. Then I look at the FAM numbers, so these are our district employees, that ours are so much lower on most of the categories than the outside contractors, and like, what lessons can we, what can we learn from them that, on our own, like the PPS employees who are doing this type of work, like, where are they getting their pipeline that we could also tap into?
I'll have to go back to the contracting team and dig a little bit deeper into that. I don't know the answer, but it's a really good question to figure out how we can be, how that compares.
Director Moore, did you have a question?
It was actually more of a comment. It's a little, little tangential, but I think interesting. I was listening to NPR a few weeks ago, and they had a very interesting report about construction companies bringing in trainers to do trauma-informed practices, because what they have found is that there is a really high suicide rate among construction workers. And they started to look into it and found out that a lot of the male construction workers and female as well are former military and that had traumatic experiences. So they started to do trauma-informed practices, and that, you know, the foreman on the site would lead the workers in discussions. And what they found is that they've had huge improvements in attendance, in retention of workers, the quality of work has improved, the number of workplace accidents has decreased, and they're, and the employees, the construction workers, are reporting much more satisfaction at their job. So, and I think some of the unions are beginning to look at this as a practice that they can I offer that as an anecdote.
That's great.
I think, shall we get this motion on the table and then see if we have more board discussion? I think you guys are done with your presentation, right?
Yes.
Okay. The board will now consider resolution number six zero five zero, Portland Public Schools' adoption of construction career pathways, C2P2 regional framework. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Director Scott moves. Do I have a second? Director to pass seconds of motion to adopt resolution six zero five zero. Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment on resolution six zero five zero?
No.
Is there any additional board discussion? Or back to our board discussion. Director Scott?
So, so this is, this is a fun day for me. It's an opportunity to wear two different hats at the same time in a, in a really sort of exciting way. So this is something that, when I got to Metro a year and a half ago in June of 2018, just a month before you launched the public sector work group, and, you know, one of the things that, I've been part of a lot of intergovernmental work groups over the years, most of which result in some nice language and agreements, but not a lot of actual concrete, you know, activities. And, that's right, and when I got to Metro and sort of heard more about this, this project and how exciting it was, and then sort of watched as Rahi and her team, you know, was able to actually bring this plane in for a landing and get to a point where not only did you get a regional framework agreed to by all these governments, but now you actually have governments taking steps to adopt it. So it's, it's a really positive step forward. They've outlined the issues in construction. There's such an opportunity here with this demand and the ability to move quickly, and when you say that, I mean, it's been a two- to three-year process. But for government to get to where we are, that's, that's actually moving, moving pretty fast. And I really, it's, it's exciting to now be on the school board and have a chance to support this and help move it forward as well. So I just, I just wanted to thank Rahi for her work. I want to note Sabrina Owens-Wilson in the back of the room, who also is, has helped bring, bring this thing in and, and get it adopted. So thanks for that work. I do, in response to a couple of comments from other directors, things like the project labor agreement and the anti-harassment, the fact that PPS isn't doing it yet, this framework actually gives us opportunities to do that, and having that regional collaboration, those project labor agreements are really challenging. When I was at the City of Portland, they were just, I mean, a huge hurdle to cross, but the more governments that do it, the easier it's going to get, the more we have a boilerplate, the easier it's going to get. Same thing with anti-harassment training. When that becomes expected in government contracts, we're not going to have the same issues in terms of bidders and so forth that we have. So anyway, it's a super exciting program. I think it's got great potential and really excited to support it tonight.
Thank you.
I have a comment too. So I'm a founding member of Oregon Trade Women's Network.
Oh, nice.
And had a, about a twelve or fourteen-year career in construction management.
Excellent.
So I know the importance of family wage jobs for women and people of color. When I worked at Metro, I compiled the report for the utilization of minority women emerging small businesses, and at that time, in 2012 and 2013, we had eighty-seven percent of the utilization dollars were emerging small businesses, and four percent of the Metro's utilization were minority-owned businesses. So this is an opportunity for, you know, stimulate the economy, and we know what happens when women have living wage jobs with benefits. You know, it translates to stable neighborhoods and housing and schools. My, I have a comment about the anti-harassment. When I, when Oregon Trades Women founded, there weren't bathrooms for women on site, and I know that's changed, and I know that we need to do stuff, put measures in place to address the anti, to address the harassment that happens. I'm curious about the use of community benefit agreements and where the, where that lands with the intergovernmental agreement, and also, what are we doing to support some of the other constructing hope, for instance, Oregon Trades Women's, you know, Career Day, and other external support such as the bonding issue and, and banking that makes it difficult for people to get into the trades and start their own businesses?
Is it my turn now? Great, thanks. Hi Rahi.
Hi.
How are you?
Good.
Good. I know Rahi, just for context, just saying hi. Yeah. Before I ask questions, what is, I don't know a lot about it, but what is the development that has been done on, like, how this will affect students? Because all the questions I have are like about student voice and how that's kind of incorporated into the feedback that I assume went into creating C2P2, and, yeah.
So how do you want me to go around and answer?
I don't, it doesn't matter, you go.
Do you want to address the community benefit question?
Oh, sorry. That was my fault. I shouldn't have gone.
You were excited.
I was excited. I do, it makes me more comfortable to talk, so that's a good thing.
So on the community benefits...
So on the community benefits, um, agreement, I think. Our approach is community benefits has a broader scope, um, in terms of the agreement that we built on here. Um, so when I think of community benefits, I think in addition to. The construction jobs, we're looking at other ways that we are impacting community and, and broadening out, like amenities. Um, and things like that. Um, I will say that this framework was very much informed by our community partners. Our labor partners and folks who would make that coalition of a community, uh, around benefits. Um, so we're really excited to continue to evolve, um, this framework, um. Director Scott mentioned, uh, a project labor agreements. Right now, we are working with several of our agencies. Are engaged in some discussions with the building trades and the carpenters of, of some boilerplate. Templates for implementing this construction careers, because we are lifelong partners. They are on the supply side, we are on the demand side. And we need to have a path forward where we're not reinventing the wheel, uh, on how they can deliver on equity, so. I think it's an evolving conversation. I was really excited today when we had our launch of our, uh, regional planning, uh, discussion. We had members of the community, community based groups like SEI, we had. Folks from the pre apprenticeship programs, we had building trades, individual union leaders. In addition to the public owners who are at the table to plan together, what are the top priorities for our regional collaboration next eighteen months? It's provided us a lot of clarity about what we need to get done. I know things take a long time, but we're also like urgently trying to catch up, so I always have that urgency and. So I think it's an evolving conversation and we're really hoping to make sure that. What we're investing in continues to grow the supply of workers and protects them on the, on the job. In addition to that, I would say connected to your question is, um, you know, what are we doing about students? Um, a leader, uh, from SEI was in our meeting today and said, I have a hundred and fifty PPS grads. Ready to go who I want to expose to construction careers, but I want to do it in partnership with you all and make sure we have the wraparound support. So we really feel like not everyone's going to go to college. This is a lifelong sustaining career. And we have to create the landing place for our grads, so if they want to continue in these careers. Or the parents of PPS students want to engage in these careers, so they could support their families, that we built an infrastructure to help them be successful.
And Maxine, I, I believe that we already have student representatives on this, our CTE advisory, um, committee, and so. That would be really a great, uh, connection to make here, because you're, you're here speaking to us mostly because. We're on the demand side, but of course, we're also on the supply side, so the more that we can connect with your network and. And use your network to support our CTE programming, like, you know, we love to see all those logos and all those lists of, of. Local employers who are in these conversations, because those are the partners that we need to support those, those programs. So that's, I think, a, a, a great place for you to make that connection for.
Great.
Chair Constant, so that was partly the point I also wanted to make also when, when I heard our student rep. When the study calls for recruitment of diverse workers, it points out that. The barrier is that there aren't current, uh, strong outreach efforts with K twelve. Uh, and asks for that stronger collaboration and alignment, so. It's nice to see, uh, some of those, uh, who do partner well with us, uh, but what we're often finding, and not just in PPS. Um, that you, that we aren't providing our high school students in construction pathways, those job shadowing and apprenticeship opportunities, and so. Um, how do we strengthen that as a, as a direct opportunity to, to attract diverse students getting those kinds of experiences? I know it's something that's part of our current conversation now is making sure there's an array of those opportunities.
I had a question about, sorry, Director Bailey, I was going to mention our time at the sheet metal. Okay, you go for it then, sir.
No, 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 it's all yours.
So Director Bailey and I got to go to the, um, sheet metal, uh, training facility and see some of what they were doing, and I. These logos are a little small and I'm, I'm over forty, so, um, I don't see their logo here though, so are the sheet metal folks part of this?
Yeah, we work with all the, all the union trades and, you know, we've asked for support letters and individual unions have sent them in and some haven't. Um, our policy is we work with the organized group of the building trades unions and the carpenters unions. And their reps and we're encouraging. Building trades leaders to bring individual trade leaders from the individual trades like sheet metal and ironworkers. To participate in all of these processes and we're excited that. Several of them, I don't know if sheet metal will be included, will be participating in a joint equity training. Um, when we work together on our potential labor agreement, so. I think there's, we're just like really creating lots of opportunities even for the unions that may not always get a lot of attention, like the electricians. Uh, to, to get, to get on board.
Yeah, they have a really amazing program with Mount Hood Community College to do this apprenticeship and they have a pre apprenticeship with the Reynolds School District. At Reynolds High School where students can kind of begin. Um, and are, they were very interested in talking about how to improve equity and that was one of the questions we asked and, um. There was a gentleman there from, he wasn't one of the Hood River people, oh, he was from, uh, the, sorry, Clark County, Clackamas E S D. Um, and had some really great ideas about how they could do that and they seemed really hungry for that ability to increase, um. The diversity of their, um, apprentices, so I'd encourage if there's, it seems like they're ready and hungry for that, if there's a place to make a connection.
Bailey?
Yeah, having that kind of pre apprenticeship link directly with high schools would really improve the pipeline. Um, because the, the, the information flow about the current status of apprenticeship programs. How many people are accepting, how you need to get in, it's kind of.
Absolutely.
And has been for a lo- has been for a long time.
Um, the middle school, Oregon Trade Women's ha- have found that the middle school, um, for girls in particular is a really great entry point too, so. Their career day is focused on showing middle school students like how cool it is to boss boys around and use tools and. It's, it's really a fun, um, day to participate in.
So that was a great. Uh, thing for me to follow with, because I was gonna say in, um, nineteen seventy-three. PPS did something revolutionary, which was they opened up all their shop classes to girls. Because before that, it was only open to boys, and so shop in middle s- in, it wasn't middle school, they were K eights, but they had. Robust middle grades programs, um, so in, in boys shop, girls went to home ec, but boys shop. You did sheet metal, um, welding, um, ironwork, I mean, uh, these. Plastic molding things, I mean, it was an amazing, um, switch and. I think that, um, for me personally, when I went to that class, it opened up the possibility for me to see like, hey, I could make, I'm a, I'm a builder and a creator and I can, I mean, I still have the stuff that I made. The toolbox and, you know, hinges and construction proj- you know, a bunch of, um, carpentry projects. But I think I'll actually wait until high school is too late, because I think in some ways there's sort of gender reinforcing stereotypes about what our careers for. Girls, by the time you get to, it's sort of like sports, if you're thinking somebody's going to pick up something and think of themselves in a different way, there's. So much societal and cultural stereotypes that people already feel by that age, and I think. If we think of middle grades redesign, um, that, that is a possibility in these pipelines into the high school, I. You know, I, I think every girl can see herself as a creator and a builder, um, but. It needs to happen early and it needs to be before all these reinforcing stereotypes, um, get in, so I hope. We consider that as part of like the, the pipeline, not just high schools. Um, also, um, just want to thank Metro for the leadership. I don't think we, this project would have all come together, so. Thank you to the, the Metro team, we're pulling PPS in. I don't think I got an answer to my question on the, um, I got a partial answer, I think on the. Whether our major contractors would be required to take the pledge, so I saw that we have.
I don't think we've determined whether they will or not. We need to make that happen.
Because the thresholds are pretty low, a hundred to two hundred, which is great to have that equity in contracting, but. I just say, I just think we have, you know, hundreds of million dollars of projects out with some of our major contracts. There's not on this and I'm kind of wondering like why we have a.
Yeah.
Two standards for our contractors.
Yeah, and I'll have to ask, I, I also noticed that some of our big name, names weren't on the list and I'm just not sure why. Um, why that is, and I know that it's. Some of them have come in through other jurisdictions who have pulled them in, so that's probably something that we need to work through.
Do you mean on the pledge list up here?
Um, we, yeah, we have actively gone out to all, we convened and. At least two focus groups with all of the major GCs, um, including Skanska, Mortensen, others. Um, and the pledges we got back were the pledges we got back, so I do definitely think. There's opportunities for jurisdictions, especially those that are working with those contractors. Um, to encourage a pledge, uh, sign on like this. The ones we did get. We were able to get through agencies who had relationships with those contractors, including us getting from Mortensen.
Um, my issue with only having part of our contractors or not asking everybody is. Um, I mean, it's not cheap to do this, um, because I think it takes extra work to create a pipeline and to train and support and to sort of bust through the. Um, issues and the barriers that exist, so in some ways the contractors that, um, agree to. Um, agree to take the pledge, um, might be like creating a cost differential, um. Around that, so it, it seems like we should have a point of view about whether this is a requirement, um, or you get extra points if you.
Yeah.
Um, bid on something that, that it's not putting them at a cost disadvantage and.
Yeah.
Something that we actually want them to do.
There's two things, you're talking about two different, two different but related and important things. One is. You know, who's committing to working with the jurisdictions and the, um, and the C two P two partnership and program to, um, you know. Uh, increase their standards and work on these issues, and then there's the PPS policies. And what we put in our, um, in our contracts with our contractors, what we require of them, and I think. What you're getting at is why aren't we putting anti harassment policies, um, or, you know, thresholds or, um. I'm having a hard time being articulate, but why aren't we building that into what we're having our folks sign? Um, right now, we don't have that, um, standardized, so I think it's a really good question, um, and one that I think we need to contemplate. Is that helpful?
Yeah, yeah, no, it is, it is helpful and I, Rahi will correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, I mean. One of the issues here is legally what we're allowed to do and, and so it is worth noting, I mean, these goals, these goals are aspirational. We can include them as aspirational goals, um, but we actually can't necessarily require. Um, and so there's a, there's a fine line we need to walk in terms of the, you know, the continuing to do this outreach, continuing this pressure on. And, and frankly, the, the, the more common this becomes, I think the more these companies are going to see this as, you know, as, as, as standard practice, yeah. But one of the things that legally we, and no jurisdiction can sort of say you, you have to hit these, these goals. Um, so it becomes a little bit of a fine line in terms of encouraging folks to do it. Did I?
Yeah, and I would just add that, um, it's important whether they're aspirational or more, you know. Uh, create, uh, like concrete goals. That what we're asking agencies to do when you adopt this is to weave this framework into the way you do business. With your contractors, and so that's why we ask agencies to create thresholds. To define when pieces of this framework get implemented in your contracts. And the anti harassment piece, for example, there isn't a standard curriculum out there and so part of the work is to commit to. Saying that, you know, on key projects that you would do, uh, you would, you would encourage contractors to provide that training, um. And in addition to that, our regional collaboration, we're actually working together across agencies to figure out what is a great. Like package that we can deploy on all of our work sites. That contractors could use, so they're not just making it up on, as they go, but actually is vetted and is effective and consistent. So we want to make it easier for everyone to be successful here. We're not trying to create new, you know, hurdles. And at the same time, we also have to push our contractors to do better than they're doing, and so it's a, it's a, it's a gentle dance. And we encourage agencies to adopt the framework, so you have a guidelines of what you're going to be. Um, incorporating into your agreements with your contractors.
And a commitment to working with our partners.
And the third leg of that stool is we need to give your workforce a head start here in PPS.
Yeah.
Our own students. Uh, the board will now vote on resolution six zero five zero. Did we have, did I hear, uh, did someone have further question or?
Was there a comment?
Uh, no. Uh, the board will now vote on resolution six zero five zero. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution six zero five zero is approved by a vote of seven to zero with student representative lateral voting.
Yes.
Yes. All right, thank you so much and thank you for all the work. We're excited to be a part of it. Uh, tonight, uh, let's move into updates from our committees. Uh, Director Lowery, can you provide an update on the Charter and Alternative Programs Committee?
Yes, we have been very busy in the Charter and Alternative Programs Committee. It's that time of year when we're renewing charters and, uh, voting on extensions. So Director Bailey and I got to visit the Opal School, um, the Portland Village School and Kairos PDX, uh, in the last week, and I know. Uh, Chair Constant had been to those sites already. Um, we'll be visiting Arthur Academy next week. Those are the four charter schools that are in the renewal and extension process. Um, we'll be having a public hearing on the renewals, um, for the Portland Village School and Kairos PDX on. The thirteenth of February at six thirty PM, right back here in this, our favorite spot to gather. Um, and then the, um, Charter and Alternatives Program Committee will be gathering on the twentieth at five PM. Uh, to have some discussion, conversation. We'll be presenting our recommendations to the board on March third for a vote, so. Uh, be looking for that information in your packets coming soon.
Can I ask a question? Um, so last time around with the, uh, charter approvals, there were a number of, um, charters that got renewals, but. Um, there was a lot of questions about the diversity of their, um, student bodies and not necessarily reflecting the student body of the. Larger district and I'm just wondering, we had asked, um, people to come back with numbers and whether that sort of series of, um. Questions are being asked in the renewal process, um. In addition, like whether, like the type of outreach that's happening in other languages and things, just because we were primarily having charter schools that had. Pretty non diverse student bodies, um, so I'm wondering, I'm curious if that's something that's been part of the conversation.
Director Bailey and I have both asked those questions at the charter schools that we've been visiting about their demographics and their intentions, um. Portland Village School has chosen to do a weighted lottery, so they, um, the state of Oregon has changed the allowances for lottery. And so there is waiting and, uh, they have chosen four key areas, including. Oh, I'm going to get this wrong, uh, race and ethnicity, special ed, I think free and reduced lunch. They said not special ed, free and reduced lunch, income, yeah. There were seven potential areas and so they have chosen to do a weighted one. Kairos does as well. Opal has chosen not to at this point, um, because they feel like the language around the statute is, is cloudy, so. Um, we're going to be talking to them more about that, but, um, Portland Village School has seen a change in their demographics since they began the weighted lottery. And we have not had the chance to ask Arthur Academy that yet, because we have not been there, but that has been one of our foremost questions, and I know that Portland Village School has done a lot of work to. Do their recruitment in lots of different languages.
But that did come up in Arthur Academy's initial presentation, that they have really, um, grown their number of, um, Latino students, Latinx students.
So the fuzzy statute was something that they, that in the past some of those schools had raised, um, it seems like. We should maybe as part of a longer term strategy, um, get, try and remove the, the fuzziness, um, because. It really does make, I know Kairos has a weighted lottery, um, does make a difference and we shouldn't.
Yeah, I think it's not the statute, it's the, um. Correct me if I'm wrong, it's the feeling that the state is saying you can use these weights, but if somebody sues you, it's on you, not us. Um, so no legal cover, and if you're a small nonprofit with a small margin and you get sued by somebody around. Some kind of discre- discrimination, um. You, your options are unlimited.
So we, uh, we're in an extension with Opal, that's the one school that's not doing weighted. We will be doing a renewal with them next year, so, uh, Director Brem Edwards. So we'll, we'll be asking Opal that question, I think, more intensely next year when they're up for renewal, because they're the only one of the schools that we're talking to that's not doing it, so I think. We can talk with our general counsel and, and more deeply explore that with them. Um, as we kind of say, this is something we, we want our charter schools to reflect the population of our whole school community.
Great, because I was just noting, because they're, they're not actually nonprofits, they're chartered schools. Is that, is that right?
No, they're nonprofits.
I would say it, it'd be maybe better to let them know sooner rather than later, so they have a longer runway in order to meet or. So they have a longer runway in order to meet or at least let them know this is coming.
They all know that it's a priority, comes up in the renewal process every year. It's just, um, and we actually have, uh, we're getting a bit far afield. But we actually have one of our charter schools that had a considerable amount of pro bono legal work done for them. On what they couldn't could do in terms of recruiting a more diverse student population. And I was just thinking the other day, we should ask them to share what they can from, um, that work for, to some of our other charters. Um, okay, Director Brem Edwards, you have a report from the Multiple Pathways Design Advisory Committee?
I do. On January twenty-ninth, um, the, uh, Multiple Pathways to Graduation Project Team met. And there was a, a follow-up from a meeting several weeks before in which there had been sort of different, uh, layouts shared. And really talking deeply with staff about, um, because I think one of the complexities is different than, uh, regular, um, design advisory group is. It's not just one school, it's a host of programs. And how do they, how do they work together around the shared space? Um, and then also have their own individual student needs, um, met. So we're getting to a much more refined, the group is getting to a much more fine, refined recommendation. And, um, having space that, um, best supports, um, students in, but are really, I mean, although they may be all considered like alternative programs. They're, they all have very different needs and, um, so that works underway. Um, and sort of, I think some really great partnership from the Alliance at Meek and the Alliance at Benson programs. And how they become alliance, um, versus two separate, uh, programs. Um, in addition, uh, and I think I flagged this last meeting, um, there was two issues that were raised. One relating to, um, the fact that our resolution didn't, the original resolution didn't include some language around the teen parent program. And then there was also concern about whether the gymnasium was adequate for, um, the, the school. Because it wasn't really, um, located in here. And, you know, tribute to the, um, the facilitators and the firm that's doing the design work. They came with some examples of what actually the, the design and the space of the gym. Some real life examples of what that actually looked like. So people could visualize what it looked like than it, it's a real gym. And so calling it an auxiliary gym was actually a misnomer. Um, it's really kind of a medium sized gym is what, what it is. So it's, you had a full court. Well, I think there was a lot of initially, it was like, you're getting an auxiliary gym was like less than. But they're getting a full, you know, a, a full size basketball court, you know, wood floors. And, um, also space for, um, peop- um, whether you're having an all school assembly or, um, with families that accommodate that. So really, you know, I think shout out to the study for bringing some, allaying some fears that that wasn't gonna be part of the design in there. And then, um, there's, and I can share this with, uh, Director Scott, the language that needs to be added to the resolution. Um, there's just two, two pieces that need to be added in order to, um, reflect what it is that they're actually building. And also to, um, acknowledge that this teen parent administrative staff offices need to be accommodated there. So I'll pass that off to you for your committee to, to consider.
Um, Director Moore, I know the Intergovernmental Task Force, um, did not meet, but, um, the legislative session is, is underway. So you wanna give a brief report about what we're paying attention to there?
Uh, yeah, very brief because the session will be very brief. Um, it's thirty-five days in total and we're already, what, four days in? So I just wanna, um, just want to, um. Uh, it, mention a couple of things. Uh, the, the big thing this session will likely be, uh, carbon and climate discussions. Um, that were tabled at the, uh, long session last year. Um, and PPS doesn't have any specific, um, agenda on this, uh, but we're gonna be paying close attention.
I think they can be pretty sure they're gonna see some of our students too.
Um, yes, I think, um, I think m- many of us in PPS have an agenda. And that will be made known, I think, to the legislature. Um, so there are three bills that, um, are, uh, going to be specifically looked at, that we're gonna be paying attention to. Uh, two of them are technical fixes to legislation that happened, um, in the last session. First is Senate Bill fifteen twenty. It's a technical fix to the school nutrition parts of the Student Success Act. SB fifteen twenty-two is a technical fix to, uh, Senate Bill one fifty-five that was passed last year. Um, and it's going to clarify the definition of sexual conduct. And, um, specifically, um, changing the language to ensure that, um, sex ed programs and, and that sort of thing are not considered. Are not considered sexual conduct. The third bill is House Bill, uh, four zero three nine. And this is, uh, new legislation, um, that, uh, has been adopted as one of three twenty twenty committee bills. By the House Committee on Human Services and Housing. It seeks to expand unaccompanied houseless youths' access to services. Um, and then finally, um, we'll be paying attention to any legislative discussions regarding the I-five Rose Quarter Project. That's it.
There's, uh, some gun safety legislation. Is that something that we want to weigh in on? Uh, around, uh, trigger locks and gun safes?
We can consider it.
I think we have an interest in that.
Um, so we're at a bit of a disadvantage in terms of defining a specific legislative agenda. Because we have not had the opportunity to talk about it as a full board. I think, I think we'll be paying attention to it. And i- if, uh, I'm gonna make a promise here, um, because I can. Um, that as things develop over the next thirty days, um, anything that, um, our legislative people. Feel has, um, implications for PPS, we'll be hearing about it. And then we, we could have an opportunity at that point to weigh in.
Here comes Courtney. I think we have also, um, had inquired today about, um, one bill regarding the essential skills test.
Yeah, so thanks. Um, yeah, we have not had a chance to meet as an intergovernmental task force, government, uh, legislative intergovernmental task force. We have had to reland that meeting to accommodate another meeting that we need to have first. Um, but what I usually do during session and the short session, like Rita said, is really short. Um, but what I've typically done is sent out a weekly update that kind of summarizes what's happening, things that you need to be aware of. If there's anything that needs an action item, I'll try to let you know. If things align with, you know, our students, like the homeless student services bill, some of those things are pretty easy to say. Are you guys good if I go down there and support it? Um, so it's a little bit more, um, ad hoc, I would say during the short session, just because it's so rapid. Um, but I'll just try to keep you in the loop and especially the, um, uh, leadership, just to make sure that things can be moving quickly. Um, if that's okay with all of you.
So another legislative item, um, that we should keep our eye on is the Technical Corrections Bill.
To the Student Success Act.
To the, um, Student Success Act. So, um, anytime there's, I mean, it was a major rewrite of the, um, tax code. Anytime that happens, there's always unintentional, um, drafting errors, um, that need to be corrected. And, um, it's perfectly appropriate and usually happens. And the, um, I think the one thing that we need to be on guard on is things that are actually revenue losers. Um, that they're not actually technical corrections, they're actually exemptions or, um, you know, kind of relitigating the bill. And so, um, I, I think that, um, what we don't wanna end up is, um, with less. Cause I know the staff has already been working hard to, um, create a package within the money we have. But, um, anytime you see revenue losses, um, there's gonna be an impact, um, on districts if that comes out. So I think that's, um.
Yeah, it's definitely on my list. And I think, um, because we haven't had a time to really sit down, um, the list that Rita listed, the list that Rita listed, um, is not everything. It's a few highlights. And I will tell you on the fifteen twenty-two fixed, the technical fix bill on fifteen twenty-two or to one fifty-five. It's, there's a lot, I'm throwing out a lot of numbers. Senate Bill one fifty-five, which responded to sexual misconduct issues historically, um, has, now has a fixed bill, Senate Bill fifteen twenty-two. It had a public hearing today. It's gotten a little, um, it's gone a little haywire, um, not because of anything we've done. Um, but the, it, the relating to clause on the bill is relating to education. Which means that anything that you could possibly think of that could maybe relate to education, they're gonna try to amend it. So there's a lot of conversations happening, some of which are really not that relevant to us. Um, but I just want you to know that it's, that one is gonna be interesting. And if for any reason it doesn't pass, the, um, the items that are included in the underlying bill are, um, good, it's good clarification, but we can do it next time. So it's nothing that would impact what we're doing right now. Um, the clarification's important. OEA brought those things up. Um, you know, if somebody's teaching sex ed, should they, you know, they shouldn't be accused of that, those kinds of things. They're, they're important considerations, but the work still continues. So if we need to like come back later in twenty-one to, um, you know, better refine that, we will. And, and I am frankly, SB one fifty-five will have continued refinements over time. Because it's, it's a big change from the ten years ago bill that passed, um, related to those issues. So that, that's gonna be interesting to watch.
Okay, keep us posted. And, and with regard to the climate talks, um, since you'll be the one paying close attention to what's going on when. It would be good to give our student activists heads up when you know that there's hearings that they might be interested in attending.
I'll be in close touch with Shanice and team to make sure that we, um, take opportunities where we can.
Great. All right, uh, we didn't, uh, anything else for the good of the order?
Um, Benson had a open house, um, to share their plans with the public.
Oh, great.
It was great to talk to a couple of alumni and children at Benson, kind of families there.
Good. Um, all right, we will now adjourn into a work session on enrollment balancing in the Mazama Conference Room. Uh, the next meeting of the Board of Education will be held February twenty-fifth. This meeting is adjourned.